Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Holiday in Falmouth opened year-round for your business and travel needs. We provide a full restaurant and accommodations for banquets, holiday parties, weddings, corporate events, seminars, and more. Featuring KC Bar &amp; Grill where guests or Falmouth residents can enjoy our selection of local craft beers, cocktails, and a variety of pub food from our menu.
Into executive session under General Laws Chapter 30A, Section 21A6 regarding an update on Andrews Farm land acquisition. And as Chair, I call the reason for executive session to be that confidential information that may impact our bargaining position with respect to this land acquisition.
And return to open session.
And return to open session.
Second.
Jones, aye.
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Moran, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Leonard, we're meeting in the old water room in Virginia.
We just came back from executive session. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a proclamation today. Like Brown, are you doing a reading move?
Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of radio, and the Falmouth Amateur Radio Association is celebrating more than eighty-five years. And whereas amateur radio has provided and continues to provide a bridge between people, societies, and countries by creating friendships and sharing ideas worldwide. And whereas amateur radio operators have provided countless hours of community services in emergencies and local organizations throughout these decades. And whereas these amateur radio services are provided without compensation. And whereas the town recognizes the services of FARA, provides to our many emergency response organizations including the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department. And whereas FARA has further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing communications for local events such as the Falmouth Road Race, the Cape Cod Marathon. And whereas the Town of Falmouth recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who have, who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarn Program of the United States Weather Bureau. And whereas the American Radio Relay League is the national organization for amateur radio in the United States. And whereas the League's Field Day exercise will take place on June 24th through 25th, 2017. And is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateurs' skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Now therefore, we, Susan L. Moran, Megan English-Braga, Doug Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, and Douglas C. Brown, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us to do so, hereby proclaim June 25th through the, excuse me, June 19th through the 25th, 2017 as Amateur Radio Week.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice job.
Okay.
Would you, Brad, a chance to say a few words?
Yes, I think he's...
Poised.
Absolutely.
Send us a radio message.
Poised and ready. For the record, my name is Brent Putnam. I'm the president of the Falmouth Amateur Radio Association. I want to thank you all for the proclamation and invite you all to come by Saturday and Sunday. The Falmouth Amateur Radio Association is participating in Field Day, which is a national emergency preparedness exercise, if you will. We spend 24 hours from 2:00 PM on Saturday until 2:00 PM on Sunday. We do actually operate through the evening overnight. And it's a test of how well we can set up a station and operate it without electrical power from the street and communicate with other hams across the country who are doing the very same thing. You've seen me up here before with Morse code keys. Well, I wanted to bring something a little bit more modern this time. This is actually a self-contained satellite station. I've used this myself in years past to communicate with satellites. And there's a small radio right here, and the antenna, of course, is there. And we just point it and follow the satellite as it goes across the sky. And we've used it to communicate with hams in other parts of the country. So, we not only use the old-fashioned, but we use the very modern and very useful. So again, I invite you all to come by Saturday. We'll be at the Barnstable County Fairgrounds, the intersection of Courier Road and 151. 2:00 PM Saturday to 2:00 PM Sunday. Come on by, we'll get you on the air. And that applies to the public as well. You're welcome to come by. I left with each of you, and there's a few left over here. Twenty-two things you can do with amateur radio. So, look forward to seeing you all, and thank you for your time.
I've gone before. It's a great event. Thanks a lot, Brent. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is a new item at Selectman's strategic planning meeting. We agreed that every meeting, we would provide recognition of some usually civic-minded important events. And Doug, you have the first?
Also, just to point out that we do have the Fourth of July ceremony coming up before we have our next meeting. And we did want to recognize the efforts of the Falmouth Fireworks Group, that they're moving forward beautifully in that. And also the amount of work that the Fire and Rescue Department do on that evening. It is a fantastic effort, joint effort of the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Office. If you've ever been down to their command station they have down at the harbor, it is really tremendous how hard they work at making sure it is a fun, safe, good family event. And so for both the volunteer committee and our service individuals of the Fire Department, I want to recognize what they've been doing for us also.
Thank you very much.
And the shirts and hats are really cool this year.
Fundraising, that's right.
Twenty bucks a piece. Country fair restaurant.
Very cool. With respect to announcements, I have a sad announcement that former police chief, Paulino Rodriguez, recently died. He was a career officer in Falmouth, and we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have another announcement.
Yes.
Of general importance, particularly to community leaders, but also to residents, is the upcoming Cape Cod Commission Open One Cape Summit, which is occurring Thursday and Friday of this week, the 22nd and the 23rd. The 22nd will be dedicated, as previously, is pretty much to the water pollution mitigation that we've been trying to accomplish and move forward on a town-by-town basis, but looking at it across the entire Cape as well. But Friday's different this year because it's going to focus on economic trends that are going on and the huge housing challenges that we now have. There is an economist that's retained by the Cape Cod Commission. He will be coming and reporting on his findings, both looking at census data and sales data. I've been to a couple of his interim reports, and it's, it's the kind of thinking that we need to be, we ought to have in our minds, because it's really kind of telling us where we're heading. Sometimes, on a day-to-day basis, we're not aware of it, but get an economist in, and he's looking at all the data, and he can tell you some things about how things are going to be going in the future. And I would suggest that if your interests are in this area, the whole economy of the Cape and the housing crisis that we're into because of the imbalance between demand and supply, this Friday's One Cape Summit is a good time to actually get informed. If you wish to go, you can go on the site and register, and you can also get a copy of the agenda at that time. The website is capecodcommission.org/onecape. Capecodcommission.org/onecape.
Great. Should be a good presentation, Doug.
No announcement. I know we're discussing it later in our meeting, but there is a hearing at the library tomorrow, at the Herman Room, dealing with the schedule of the Steamship Authority, that a petition was put forward asking that the Steamship Authority hold a hearing, and so they will at 3:30 tomorrow afternoon to approve the schedule for the upcoming year.
And members of the board will be there, and anyone from the public, if you're interested, you should attend as well. Doug, did you have something as well?
No, but I'll be at both of those events.
Terrific. Okay, next we have public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters that are not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter's not been included on the agenda, the Board of Selectmen may not participate in the discussion of the topic. Please make no personal references, personal remarks about any member of the Board, any person having business before the Board, or any other identified individual are not allowed. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay. Next, we have minutes of the meetings, the open session on Monday, June 5th. Sam?
Yes, just a clarification on page five, under paragraph F, Commission on Disabilities. Just the second paragraph, I just wanted to clear that up because it doesn't make sense right now. It says, "Mr. Patterson act about, asked about retrofitting." Instead of retrofitting, I would say, "Mr. Patterson asked about improving accessibility to town facilities."
Okay.
Actually, just, and then if I could go, there's one more clarification that I think would be important for the record. That's on page nine. And if you go down, not quite halfway, you'll see a paragraph under nine that says, "Mr. Patterson," and this, my comment was that the county extension agent responsible for coastal rating system sent me an email regarding the hazard mitigation plan. It goes on to basically say, "Can apply for participation in the community in the reporting system." And that really, instead of community in reporting system, it should be community rating system program. This does make sense, and it's an important program that I hope we will be able to qualify for down the road because it'll save some flood insurance policyholders significant money.
Okay, do we have a motion with those changes?
Move approval of the minutes with those changes and put forward.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The first item on summary of actions is approval for application of a one-day entertainment license for Molly's Tea Room, the 227 Main Street.
I move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second item is to approve an application to change Sunday hours for DTJ Enterprises doing business as West Falmouth Market, 623 West Falmouth Highway.
The only thing on that is we really aren't approving it because of Sunday hours, as they are notifying of it. We don't actually have the authority to approve or disapprove, but they do have to notify of it. For the purpose of it, let's go ahead and approve it anyway. I move approval.
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the third item, to approve an application for a one-day Sunday entertainment license for the Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Barnstable County Fair, Sunday, July 23rd, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the third item, to approve an application for a one-day Sunday entertainment license for the Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Barnstable County Fair, Sunday, July 23rd, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the third item, to approve an application for a one-day Sunday entertainment license for the Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Barnstable County Fair, Sunday, July 23rd, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the third item, to approve an application for a one-day Sunday entertainment license for the Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Barnstable County Fair, Sunday, July 23rd, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda, under administrative orders, is to approve EverSource and Verizon New England petition for joint hole relocation off Little Harbor Road opposite Butler Street to accommodate demolition work and new building construction.
I move approval.
I second that, based on the engineer's report recommending approval.
My only question is, this is the one that they had recommended that we hold off, and so I guess the engineer's now okay with that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right.
We have correspondence to that effect.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Next item, to approve EverSource petition to install two new poles and to lay and maintain underground cables, conduits, wires, and necessary equipment on Little Harbor Road north of Butler Street for new construction at 30 Little Harbor Road, Woods Hole.
I move approval.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I have one question.
Yep.
Last time we did have some of these approvals, we did ask that they get back to us about the work on Lakeview Avenue. Did we hear back from, you know, EverSource and Star about the...
Yeah, they did respond, Selectmen, and indicated that they would make every intention to complete it in the month of June. They have a long way to go. I'll note, just based on my personal observation, but I will continue to track their progress and ask for an update.
And with that explanation, I'll call the vote.
Do you have a second?
Are you saying you're asking for it?
All in favor?
Final.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, the third one, is to approve EverSource petition to install one new four-inch conduit and one handhole on Hudson Street, south of Lake Lehman Road, to upgrade electric service to 42 Hudson Street Falmouth.
I'll move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, to approve the grant of license for the Church of the Messiah to enter upon and use a portion of the Shining Sea bike path to construct a retaining wall.
Do we have anything from the Church of the Messiah here for this?
Jim?
Good evening. I'm Jim Viera. I'm the owner's project manager for the Church of the Messiah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to give an outline?
Sure. As you know, the Church of the Messiah is embarking on a renovation project to the building called the First Church. It's the old wooden building that is next to the Stone Church that we're all familiar with. As part of that project, we are building a small parking area, five spaces. And in order to do that, we need to build a small retaining wall. And it's on the slope, and it would greatly ease construction if we could access the property via the bike path. And it would be, we wouldn't be using the bike path for anything other than access. We've coordinated with the Steamship Authority. We've talked to them about the use of that. They have no problems with it. We've also talked to the Woods Hole Business Association, who uses some parking spaces there that we would be going across. And I believe Frank Duffy has written a license. And we would be using the access of that property for not more than two weeks, sometime between Columbus Day and Memorial Day in the off-season. We're not quite sure when that will happen yet, but it, we're not building anything on the bike path or on town property, we're just going across it.
Well, you said five spaces.
Five, five spaces.
That's it.
In the parking lot, on the church property.
I understand.
Yep.
And so the work is like an excavator shoring up the retaining wall?
Yeah, it's, we'll be a mini excavator, a Bobcat. This is not a huge project.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval of the license. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is whether to authorize the town manager to submit a land grant and related grant applications to the Commonwealth and to execute any items related to such applications and awards relating to the Tony Andrews Farm. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the Board's aware, a key financial component of the town's efforts to acquire the Andrews Farm property involves working with the 300 Committee in acquisition or securing, attempt to secure, a state land grant. As I recall, it's an amount of $400,000 that we had identified. Deadline is coming up early in July for that, and this administrative request is for the Board to consider authorizing me as town manager to execute that grant application. And also notes any related grant applications in the event that any others would come to our attention, that would be in furtherance of this Board's and the town's desire to acquire that property, as we discussed at town meeting and elsewhere. You also have in your packet a copy of a document that would go along with the land grant application, if that is a desire of the Board. But the administrative order is a broader request in addition to that in the event. Again, we do not have another grant application envisioned at this moment or in hand, but we continue to look for possibilities. That's why I leave that door open with the land grant deadline looming.
So these are the required next steps essentially for the potential major purchase that is, that we're moving forward on?
Absolutely correct. And in advance, we're attempting to finalize the purchase and sale agreement. As the Board's aware, that is underway as we speak.
Any questions?
I move to authorize the town manager to submit a land grant and any other applications for grants that he so deems would be appropriate in moving forward this, and to ask you, any items related to the purchase and to the applications and awards as relates to the Tony Andrews Farm.
Second.
Go ahead. I was going to say I would second that, but with the clause that as long as these grants are, can be fulfilled without causing more trouble than they're worth. Sometimes they...
Don't want you to work too hard.
No free puppies.
Thank you, Selectmen. Good caution. Madam Chair, could I ask, just to clarify, would this motion also empower the Madam Chair to sign this document that's included in your packet just to...
Yes.
It would go along with a land grant application?
Yep.
Thank you.
So as mended, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, under special events, we have recurring recommended event, Bacoit Congregational Church Annual Summer Bazaar, Parsons Lane, to go to one-way traffic on Friday, July 14th, and Saturday, July 15th. Does anyone from the church here?
I move approval.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The second event, MBL's Fourth of July Parade on Water Street in Woods Hole, Tuesday, July 4th. Anyone from MBL? Okay.
I move approval.
I'll second that, too.
All those in favor?
This does involve closing the street for a short period of time. But just to let the public know, it's going to be out there. And we also have to delay for three minutes for our public hearings.
So you got to chat it up. That's a good idea. A little PR. Appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think you're close enough.
Yes, we'll move on. We have a 7:30, Chapter 207 hearing. I'm going to read the public hearing notice. You are hereby notified that a hearing will be held in the small conference room, Falmouth Town Hall, at 2:00 PM on Thursday, June 1, 2017. Whoops, that's the wrong one. Apologize for that. Got two stuck together. Thank you. Strike that. Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Chapter 207 of the Code of Falmouth on Monday, June 19, 2017, in Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the request of the Board of Selectmen to transfer by sale or lease the folly bog to the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. The affected property consists of 14.5 acres, more or less, and is located off Browns Road East Falmouth and shown on assessor's maps as 2006063000. Interested parties may review the file on the hearing at Selectman's office per order of the Board of Selectmen. And it was published in the Falmouth Enterprise, June 2nd and June 9th, and copied to a Butters. Gentlemen?
We have representatives from the Rod and Gun Club that may wish to make some comments.
You can step to the podium if you like and let us know more specifically while you're here.
My name's Dan Murphy. I'm a past president of the Rod and Gun Club and a member of the Board of Directors right now, and co-chair of the Charles River Restoration Project. And that's what this is all about, is a landlocked piece of property surrounded by Falmouth Rod and Gun Club property for us to rehabilitate the Charles River. We need that additional property going up, well, to the Falmouth Town Line. Our intention is to rehabilitate the river, eliminate some of the areas that are warming the water, and return native fish, including brook trout and herring, to the, to that
In the diagram, it definitely specifies that particular parcel number, but I noticed that there's an outline that includes the Charles River itself.
Right, that goes all the way down, that, that piece of, that twelve point, fourteen acres includes that river coming now.
Okay, so that is defined by that parcel number, twenty, twenty zero six?
It should be, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Can't do much if we don't have all the river.
Gotcha.
Actually, the river goes like this, and the town property goes straight, so we own pieces of it, and the town owns pieces of it.
Right, right. And of course, this was also voted by at-town meeting to support this project, so...
That's right, this is the next administrative step, essentially.
I guess the only question now is if it's a license or just a transfer of ownership.
Has that been resolved?
You'll be taking that up in your next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
We can move on to that.
I move to close the hearing.
Well, do we have anyone?
Oh, yeah, we should ask.
Right, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this matter in favor? Betsy, come on up.
I just say, I want to be in favor.
That's fine, if you want to just introduce yourself for the record.
That's where I was coming tonight for this, before Sue emailed me the other day. Betsy Gladfelter, and I work with Conservation Commission, and we're certainly in favor of another river being restored in town.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against?
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion from the board?
I would move to authorize the change of use for the folly bog property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're moving on with you here to the order of business, which is determination of whether it's as a lease or sale of folly bog, and authorization to execute a purchase and sale agreement. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having discussed this with town legal counsel, either a, an outright transfer of title or a ninety-nine-year lease, ten amount to the same, would be recommended, given the nature of what's proposed, I think representatives of Rod and Gun Club have indicated a preference for transfer of title, if that would be based on the consideration of this board, and I would just suggest that it would be for a de minimis amount to be determined by town council, given that the Rod and Gun Club has and will be investing considerable dollars for the plans and the necessary approvals to allow this to go forward.
I would move that we sell the, sell the folly bog property to the Rod and Gun Club, and authorize the town manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the price to determine by town council of the de minimis amount.
Second.
All those in favor?
Whoops, before we, hold on, just a question, this is, this does have a conservation restriction, and who holds that conservation restriction? Would it be the town, through the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Yep.
San Jose?
San Jose Restriction says the rest of our property, yes.
That's right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to thank the town officials, Selectmen, ConCon, and town meeting for their unanimous vote of confidence for us to start on this project.
Exciting project, and thank you, I'll just mention Dave Viera as well, who was there from the beginning.
Yes.
Very much appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Dan.
The next item on the agenda is the Water and Wastewater Monthly Report, Ray Jack. Welcome, Mr. Jack.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, Mrs. Green?
Yep.
Warming up.
I'll just introduce you with the fact that our strategic planning meeting was held at the water treatment plant, and it's just a great space and impressive, and even the facilitator insisted on a tour, walking around, so thanks very much for that.
If the facilitator was interested, that's a good thing.
I was hoping there would be a pitcher of water there for us.
Pretty soon, it's coming.
There was plenty of it in the pools.
There sure was. Didn't bring my own pitcher.
Just bring your own, that's right. Thank you, good evening, Madam Chairman. This will be a very brief update, there is no pictures this evening, because the projects are essentially complete, so really, on both projects, we're just working on punchless items, so this will be a report on basically the financials this evening. So for Little Pond Sewer Project, the original construction contract was twenty point four million, present contract value is twenty-one point six million, it stayed the same in April and in May. We did return some of the retainage on the project, that's when we achieved substantial completion, so on both of these projects, we achieved that point, and then we released the retainage from five percent down to one percent. So they did get paid, even though the numbers don't go up. So the contract value is the same, potential change orders is blank, because the next change order, or orders, there may be two, I'm hoping just one, should result in a credit to the town, not a cost, so. This is the cash flow diagram for it, it's hard, a little hard to see, twenty point one nine billion is the value that's been paid out, that's the red line up here, that's right in between the original budget and the adjusted budget for the contract, so it's good to see that during the course of the twenty-four months of the contract duration to date, that the lines have stayed very close together, which is as it should be. Long Pond Construction, original contract value is forty point nine, current value is forty-one point two million, it's ninety-eight percent complete, we have two different values here, the earned and the actual, and that's only because on the chart, it's showing one figure, on the report, it shows another figure, so how much they actually earned is forty point four million dollars, but we only paid out forty point one million dollars, we did release about one point six million dollars in retainage over the last month, so there's only about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're presently holding in retainage. Final completion of the facility will be June through July, and that includes decommissioning of the Long Pond existing pump station that we have, that won't be decommissioned until after the new plant starts up. Potential change orders we have is about a hundred and ten thousand, during the course of this month, that was up until the end of May, so actually, during the course of June, we have already processed some of those change orders. So the actual and potential, which includes the hundred and ten, it puts it at one point oh five percent above the original contract value, but well below the budget value for the project, so both of these projects are under budget, as well as on time. And then this is the cash flow diagram for Long Pond, once again, all three lines are staying close together, the red line here is what's actually been paid out, and it's just below that blue line, the blue line is the adjusted contract value of forty-one million, so we're just about, just about there. There is some site work that's still being performed at Long Pond. It doesn't close. Wow, that's not good. Can't get it off of there, but anyway, we've operated all the process systems under actual flow conditions, all right, to include full capacity of the plant, to run it at a high speed, in order to ensure that it's gonna be able to handle it. We optimized the SCADA and the ozone systems, and they're presently working on that, the SCADA system, we're basically fine tuning it for taking it off of the existing system and putting it onto the new system, so that'll happen when we actually start up the plant to bring it online into the system, then full control of the entire water system will be vested with the new plant, as opposed to the old plant. So in the meantime, we're calibrating all of the instrumentation for the facility, that's ongoing right now. The only actual site work remaining to do is basically the final paving, which should occur this month, and obtaining our final approvals from DEP for the plant startup, we already have the CO or certificate of occupancy, and whether we become operational in June or July is dependent on when we actually get our approval to operate, because if it happens within the next week or so, we may start before the July fourth weekend, but thereafter, I will likely hold off until after the July fourth weekend for the physical plant startup, because I do not want to bring the new plant online on our biggest weekend in the year...
Highest demand.
And push it at a hundred and twenty-five percent, okay, so...
Makes sense.
So it's ready to go, but it's questionable as to when we'll actually physically run the facility into the system, and that was it.
Right, under budget and on time, you don't hear those terms all the time, and the project manager essentially was the town, or, you know, in terms of the expertise in keeping, reviewing everything, and looking at the change orders, and it's, congratulations are due.
Well, thank you, but I'd like to take the credit, but there's a few people that it really gets spread around, and I, and I can't underscore the efforts of town manager, Mr. Suso, our finance director, Jennifer Pettit, she did a fabulous job with the funding and, and working through, through the project with us, Steve Rafferty, the water superintendent, Amy Lowell, wastewater superintendent, did a phenomenal job throughout the project, so I think it was a great team effort, we were fortunate, we had good engineers and good contractor, so everybody worked well together during the entire process, and it was, it was actually fun to meet, if you can imagine, building something like this, but it was actually good meetings, very good meetings, so.
On the subject of water, the East Falmouth Village Association meeting, is Steve gonna send someone or be able to attend and just answer questions about water, just water questions that have come up?
I'm not aware of the meeting, I'm not sure if Mr. Rafferty's aware of the meeting.
I spoke with him about it.
He is aware, but we don't know for sure yet if he's coming.
Okay, just curious.
If he can, I probably could.
July twentieth, it's a Thursday night.
Okay.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Yep, one of those change orders for the water treatment plant was the actual cleanup of the firing range, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that was an unanticipated expense that still managed to get pulled in underneath, essentially underneath that budget.
Correct, and the, the really good thing about that is it's done. Normally, when you have a licensed site like that for a waste site, towns have options on how they're gonna handle it, so they can study it, and sample it, and monitor it for a period of years, up to five years, before they ultimately have to do something about it in order to get the release, if you will, or you can bite the bullet and do it, and we bit, we bit the bullet. So that was, that was all part of this, and that's because, obviously, you don't want to have lead in the water in firing range with regard to a new plant starting up, so... But that was included.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
In finishing up with Little Pond Service, Service area, there'll also be a plan to come back to the board to figure out whether we're going to try to equalize some of the costs between gravity and grinder production, right?
Yes.
So there'll still be that cost, once we know how much, what's the financial situation, right?
Yes.
One last question, there was some concerns about some of the sidewalks, and I'm wondering if there's been any change since our last month, where the contractor had done a little extra work on the side of the road, and some of the sidewalks were replaced voluntarily, voluntarily by him, but not really to the standard that you would normally expect. Has there been any more work? Some residents have told me that they were concerned it was unsafe, because the road blends right into the sidewalk in some places.
Okay, nothing is different today than it was then, the sidewalk is in the same location, the road is in the same location as both were prior to the start of the project. Obviously, the sidewalk was very old, very deteriorated, took a tremendous beating, if you will, so the entire sidewalk on the side, on the east side of Maravista was resurfaced, but that was a temporary solution to make it passable, we will be looking to put in curbing and sidewalk on that area sometime within the next two, three years, under our capital planning, so we're already factoring that in, but as far as the safety, there is absolutely nothing different now than was then. I know the concern, they say, well, you can run right up onto the sidewalk, well, that's true for the entire length of Maravista, and many of the sidewalks we have in town to begin with, so. This project wasn't intended to be a sidewalk replacement project, or a curb replacement project, so even that restoration that we did there, we were able to do it because of the amount of money that we had saved on the project, that allowed us to go in there and do that level of restoration that we did, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Sam?
Can I ask, approximately what percentage of the properties have actually hooked up to the sewer now?
Three hundred and eleven have hooked up, there were a hundred and...
Fourteen?
Hundred and seventy-four gravity, and a hundred and thirty-seven low pressure.
Okay, so the vast majority of property owners still have to hook up?
Yes, yes, about, almost about three-fourths.
Remain to be hooked up?
Remain to be hooked up, yes, but we expect a substantial number of those to occur this year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll take from the public, one minute questions, Mr. Fineran?
Mark Fineran, Precinct Six, it's my understanding that this water plant is a level-four treatment plant, and it requires someone with a T-four license to operate it before it can start, and no one in the town has a T-four license, they've tried to get some of the current employees to go for their T-four license, and as of last Friday, they tried again, and no one expressed any interest, so effectively, the position hasn't even been advertised, to my understanding, so we don't know who's gonna run this plant, and when we are gonna get someone that is authorized to run this plant.
We have someone right behind you, who I bet has a plan or knows the answer, Mr. Jack.
Okay, and also, while we're there, I also heard that the DEP determined that this plant must run in three shifts, I don't know if that's correct, but if so, that would require that we get three or four more employees, and if I'm not mistaken, would that not require town meeting's approval to authorize these positions before we could ever fill them?
Thank you, Mr. Jack.
Yes, it is a T-four system, and there's a lot of disinformation in what was just stated, there is our, there are provisions within the regulations for a facility such as this to be able to run in an automated mode, based on the level of sophistication of the state SCADA system, so that is built into the regulations, and that is what the town is currently discussing with DEP. So the facility would operate seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, the final determination will vest with DEP on whether or not that's gonna be fully manned, or gonna be allowed to be automated. With regard to the operators, our chief operator has a four-T license, which he did pass his test, and that was several months ago, so I don't know where this information came from, but the, with regard to the state, we're working with them, because they expect to have a four-T operator that has four-T plant experience under their belt, which our chief operator presently does not, so we will likely be working with a contract operator on that to satisfy DEP requirements, and we are presently working on that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have committee report for Cable Advisory Committee, and with Mr. Suso's agreement, I'm gonna, for efficiency's sake, take the, right next to that item, number nine, out of order, which is an update on proposed video production and recording equipment. So cable advisory. Mr. Eater? Thank you, Peter.
Okay, I'll try this as I'm blind to the presentation, and looking at my sheets, and see how that goes. I'm chair currently of the Cable Advisory Committee.
Sorry.
I will be until the end of this month, and then I have to leave due to my term limits. Kevin Lynch is in the same position, he will also be leaving, he's so important, and twice on the hearing there. Mr. Hyde is taking over, he can maybe stand up, because he's gonna be the future chair of the committee.
Welcome.
So I'm gonna sort of, you know, I don't want to take too long, I'm going to summarize sort of the activities of what we've done quickly the last twelve months, because we've actually done quite a bit. I'm gonna talk also briefly about the status of Falmouth as a regulated community, and that's important, and I'm gonna also talk a little bit about work we've done to understand the financial resources that are available for cable-related activities, as well as some recommendations and things, we've, we've written a number of letters to the Board of Selectmen over the last twelve months, and so I'm gonna summarize some of those things we've talked about. So as I said, we've actually, now that we have a full committee and quorum all the time, we've been pretty busy, one of the big things we do is, we see our role as helping citizens that have issues with regards to cable, so we've worked on updating our website, I was pleased to see, actually, that some of the updates made it into the new website, there'd been a little problem there. We just last week, actually, did a presentation for the senior center, talking about cable and some of the options to save money there, some things we've, we've worked very hard in the town in terms of, which I'm gonna talk a little bit about, about being regulated... in the town in terms of, which I'm going to talk a little bit about, about being regulated. Obviously, we spend a great deal of our time making sure that the cable provider remains compliant with the contract, and this issue's come up a few times, we've sent them some letters and had some issues with regards to the quality of the peg channels. You know, we had some, some issues that we, we talked about non-compliance, we're happy to say they did comply and actually have put in a lot of new improved switching equipment, which should help us quite a bit going down the road. We try as best we can to verify that payments under the license are made, peg subscriber fees. We also, as a committee, especially through the help of our FCTV liaison, Deb Rogers, we keep abreast of the regulations and the ever-changing sort of what's happening with regards to cable and what our, what, you know, what we can do to approve, what the state does, what's happening at the federal level. And then we've spent a fair amount of time in the last 12 months looking at sort of the needs of the town, broadcast equipment for this room, for instance, broadcast equipment for the library, live feeds, other things that came through. We note that ascertainment is going to be coming in October of next year, that's a three-year process to grant a new license, we've started talking about that. Another big area that we've talked about is the scope of the committee, you know, who can we get on the committee, can we provide additional services to the town in terms of technology and those sort of things. So, an issue dear to my heart is Falmouth as a regulated community. Back in 2008, Comcast argued that there was sufficient competition within the town that they did not need to be subject to rate regulation. We disagreed. We filed papers with the help of the then Board of Selectmen on the FCC, and we basically were able to keep Falmouth as a regulated community. June 2nd of 2015, the FCC has changed the way they do it. It used to be that the cable provider had to, had to prove that they were subject to competition, now they've reversed it, the community has to prove that there is not sufficient competition. Luckily, in our case, the state is the granting authority for that, and the state took that issue on, and on December 8th of 2015, the state filed saying that they, that they did not have, there was not competition in Falmouth. I note that, that many of the other communities, what we tried to notify them back in 2008, they didn't get too interested, but, but we remain a regulated community, which we think is very important because that requires Comcast to offer what's called a limited basic service. That limited basic service gives our citizens 53 channels, all of that for $13 a month, and I point out, which is very important, is because of the restrict, because that state regulated for a dollar eighty more, the, many of those channels are HD channels. So you can get HD television in Falmouth for a total with all the fees and everything after $13 per month, and whatever gets added, which are still less than on most packages, for around $21.
Thank you.
So, as part of our new agreement in 2011, the town also entered an agreement with FCTV to create a special reserve account. The current amount of money in that special reserve account is $150,002.43 and change, just to sort of break it up a little bit, $98,450 of that comes from the peg fees, which we're going to talk a little bit more about, but that's the .1% that the town keeps as part of the peg fees from Comcast. There's also $51,793 in subscriber fees. Annually, Comcast has to pay the town 50 cents per subscriber, and that's also gone into that special reserve account. I'm not going to dwell on it, I know it's, it's known, but there was also part of the Millrose, Millrose, Mill Road, I always call it Mill Rose, Mill Road, thank you, agreement, the town paid $42,000 for information technology, telecommunications and cable broadcast equipment. I'm not going to discuss it here, I understand those funds are somewhat available. But I will point out, that's not in the special reserve account, I don't, you know, that's separate funds. The special reserve account is the one that's restricted for cable-related activities. So, an important thing that we, at the Cable Advisory Committee, drive home is that those peg fees have to be used exclusively for peg-related activities and for cable-related activities. Those activities have to benefit solely the population of cable subscribers, so items that, that only go to a cable subscriber, whether it be like a camera or something, so it's sort of important to keep that in mind. And as I said, that was also reconfirmed in the special reserve account, which has language in it that says these, these funds are restricted to be used for peg and cable-related activities. And one of the other things we've done is we've sought out clarification from the state with regards to what that means, and they've sent us a bunch of letters, but basically, at the end of the day, you ask yourself, if I'm taking money out of that special reserve account, am I using it to buy something that will only benefit people who have cable television effectively? So, as I said, we've written a number of letters to you over the last year, one of the issues that we've talked about is regard to these, these fees. Okay, I think I got the other slide right, I went backwards by accident. Correct? Yes. Okay, so, obviously, there's a desire to improve the broadcast equipment for this room, there's, we want the library to also have the ability to go live and have broadcast equipment. As I said, ascertainment will be starting October 2018. Typically, we have done townwide mailings, legal fees, consultant fees. So the basic gist is keep the Cable Advisory Committee in the loop as we spend these fees, you know, we're there to advise you and help you on those sort of issues and how they're So one thing, again, that we have written you about and talked about is there's this, in the contract with FCTV, there's this thing where this .2% goes from FCTV to the town, FCTV proves that they've raised sufficient money, and then .1% goes back to FCTV. We think, since this has been happening since 2011, and FCTV has always shown that they've been able to raise those funds, we also are aware of some issues in terms of legislation and things coming forward. We think that the town should give some thought to maybe amending the contract and say, "Look, just send the .1% to the town, FCTV keep the .1% that they would get back anyway," and then annually provide evidence that they've raised sufficient funds. So that's one of the things we've, we wanted to, we have, as I said, sort of talked about that in some of our letters. I think the Board of Selectmen might want to think about that a little bit at this stage, because I think the, the, you know, so I sort of gave the points in your packet, but, but as I said, there's, there's these issues coming up, plus, plus the, the new, as I said, the new legislation, and as I said, it's, seems awful complicated. As we've tried to look at the finances, it's made things very complicated for everyone, even the town, to sort of understand where this money's going. The other last point, I think, yep, is that the Mill Rose agreement, which Town Meeting voted on in 2013 and was assigned in 2013, October of 2013, basically Comcast provided, said they would provide fiber to the library and the town, they have done the library, Mr. Suso's aware of that, we had some issues getting them to do that, they've done it, we're still waiting for them to do the town, so we need to put a little fire under Comcast to have them meet that aspect of the requirement. And that's what I have for you.
Thank you. Great presentation, and I know that, as being advisory to your committee, Mr. Suso's been very responsive and active in helping FCTV and the committee really contact the cable company and to make sure they're living up to their agreement, and that's worked well in a pinch in the past. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Eater?
Quick question, the, the fiber optic cable to the library that Comcast put in, that's a redundant connection to OpenCape?
No, that's, this is, this is, I'm not the expert on that, I don't think anyone, I think that would be for Deb Rogers, but I, I think I know the answer, so I can answer it. That's just so they can do live broadcasts with the library. So that's, that's only, that's only cable later, that only carries a cable, a video signal, because it actually goes back to FCTV's equipment, which is just video, has nothing to do with internet.
Strictly FCTV.
When you're negotiating with the cable company, do you have any leverage with regard to how they manage their customer service? For instance, I have a property that the initial two-year bargain ran out, and I noticed my bill went way up, and I called up and I said, "I'd like to reduce my service," and she says, "Well, I can't help you with that, somebody else will have to help you, I'll have them call you back." And then they don't call back, and so, you know, I try calling again, and the customer service person says, "I'm sorry, I can't help you, but these people will call you back." But they don't, so I end up having to go to the office to resolve it.
So I think you're probably a plant, because just tonight, we had two citizens, we did our presentation last week to the Senior Center, we said, "Come to us if you have issues." That's what we have been very successful at, actually, is you can't, your, your first line is to always go to Comcast, call their 800 number, visit the office here, part of our contract requires the office here, but we've had good luck when that hasn't worked, talking to our, we have, we have a line to the, the representative from Comcast that does all the communities around this area, and they've been pretty responsive. As part of our license, one of the things we ask for is for them to give us their customer service records and show us some of that information. Also on that sort of point, timely, is that we, we were just discussing today, actually, the Senior Center raised the issue, and we've been talking about it for a while, they are supposed to, as part of the license, come talk to us annually, and we want to get that going now, we want to have them come address the citizens. I don't want to go into too much detail, but there, there, you know, we feel there can be a lot more clarity in terms of things like these agreements and contracts from the point of view of Comcast, and they need to hear that from the citizens, talking to them.
Well, thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson Staub, before they leave, would you want to jump ahead to your item?
Sure, there was an interest in, I think the Cable Advisory Committee had an interest in, in expediting, talking about the replacement of the cameras, and that was related to a larger project to improve this meeting room, and I have been working on that with Mary Pat Flynn, and as well as several staff members to look at what our opportunities are. The, the first objective was to see if we could increase the size of the room, see if we could perhaps blow out that wall or expand in a different direction, and unfortunately, the answer is no on all, on all cases. The extraordinary expense required to gain very little space really does not seem to be worthwhile. So we are confining ourselves to the limits of these four walls. There are some opportunities for improvement in terms of getting rid of the wires, getting rid of the, the cart with the projector and the laptop. The best solution for this room is going to be wired monitors, and we'll get into some of the other details of it, but at this point, we are getting cost estimates, and in terms of the cameras, we certainly have sufficient funds, and, you know, there's no reason to delay on those cameras, with one exception, and that is, we're, you know, we're honing in on two layout options, and the placement of one camera might change depending on which layout option we select. So that's pretty much it, we'll be back with some cost estimates and two options for the board to look at within, within a few weeks.
Great. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the Cable Advisory Committee? Thank you for your report, it was excellent, very helpful what you've done with the seniors and your availability to the community. This is part of the Board of Selectmen's invitation to all of its committees to come and, and take some time and, and make a report to the board and to the public, so thank you very much, appreciate you all attending. Next item on the agenda is to consider and vote a position statement to the Steamship Authority to be presented at the public hearing on June 20th regarding the proposed 2018 winter and spring operating schedules. I happened to notice the meeting being advertised in the enterprise, and Mr. Johnson Staub and the town manager, Julian Suso, helped put together some potential position letters if the board wants to deliver a position letter to the Steamship at the meeting on behalf of the board. It's, we did start putting drafts together because of the very short notice. I also note that Betsy Gladfelter from the Steamship Authority is also here if we have questions. One of the things that I wondered about is, you know, there's been, I think, lots of correspondence delivered to the Board of Selectmen regarding issues with the Steamship Authority, and I think it certainly is within this board's purview to comment at the meeting in two options. One would be to give, to ask the Steamship Authority to give serious consideration to the well-documented impacts to the Woods Hole residents before adopting the proposed schedule for the winter and spring of 2018. That was one option I thought the board might want to consider. The second option would be a little bit different, to state that it's the board's position that a 5:30 a.m. freight departure from Woods Hole presents an unreasonable burden to our community, and to ask the board, the Steamship Authority to give serious consideration to changing the first freight departure to 6:30 a.m. for the calendar year 2018. That's options one and two. Option three might be something I haven't anticipated. Option four would be to not submit. So in terms of the board's consideration, Ms. Gladfelter, would you like an opportunity? Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity, Betsy Gladfelter, and now I'm representing the Falmouth representative to the Steamship Authority. And when Sue asked if I'd like to comment, I, there are three points that I'd like to make. One is I'd like to explain the process to you. It's required under the Enabling Act for the schedules to be advertised and have a 30-day comment period. And I want to assure all of you that the Steamship Authority takes all comments slash complaints and suggestions seriously into all decision-making, but all this decision-making has to consider a variety of stakeholders throughout the Steamship Authority system. So what we're talking about right now, which you had, are the 2018 winter, spring, and early spring schedules. There are two changes in the, in these schedules from the 2017 schedules. The first is on March 15th through April 1st, instead of a freight boat leaving at 5:30 in the morning, the first freight boat will leave at 6:30 in the morning. The second is during that period, there will also be a 5:30 sailing, but it'll be from the, from the Martha's Vineyard side. And the second, and this is something that's already been implemented based on some suggestions that people sent to me and also sent to Wayne, the freight schedule will be adjusted so that there's a, there'll be 20 minutes instead of 15 minutes between an arrival of a passenger vessel and the arrival of a freight vessel, and that'll spread out traffic going up Woods Hole Road. Both of these changes are in concern, are in response to concerns expressed to the Steamship Authority in the past. During the 30-day comment period, there were three comments that the Steamship Authority received. Two were from shippers requesting that a hazmat trip and an ordinary freight trip be exchanged, the time of day for them to be exchanged. And the third was from a Peter Pan bus driver requesting a later departure for the last boat on Fridays. That, that is being addressed by the administration with the Peter Pan bus company. I might say both the Steamship Authority and Peter Pan have an issue with the amount of time that their employees can be working, they're both under federal regulations. But as much as possible, the Steamship Authority tries to hold that last boat if they know that the bus is coming. There was also a petition submitted by 62 Falmouth residents, this was under Section 15A, which was added in 1979 to the Steamship Authority Enabling Act. This requires the Steamship Authority, I know it's a short amount of time, but under this provision, the Steamship Authority is required to hold a public hearing on the public schedules within 14 days of receiving the petition, and that public hearing will be tomorrow. Second point I'd like to make is, what considerations go into these schedules? Well, one of the considerations is vessel availability, and unfortunately, you Unfortunately, you, we all learned this weekend that sometimes our vessels are out of service for unforeseen reasons. But also, vessels have a regular yearly maintenance schedule and every two years they go into dry dock. And for instance, this next fall, the MV Martha's Vineyard will undergo a several-month midlife refurbishment. So projecting a year ahead as to what vessels will be available. The second thing you have to look at is the capacity required. How many vessels are needed to provide the service that is required that time of year? And part of that is based on previous year experience. And so that's one of the reasons why you'll see the changes. For instance, the change this year where for, from March 15th to April 1st, the first freight boat will be 6:30 instead of 5:30. The third thing that you have to look at in these schedules is the crewing. There are three different kinds of crewing, and again, that's based on federal regulation. And the fourth is traffic flow issues, both at the ports themselves and at approach roads, at the ports on both sides. And you know that a sailing from Woods Hole to Martha's Vineyard is 45 minutes. Schedules are discussed at a minimum for four meetings, two of the port council and two of the authority board, before they're voted upon. Reservations for trips, the reason we're six months out is that as soon as these schedules are approved, there'll be reservations for the winter schedule. And the third sort of misrepresentation I'd like to clarify for you is there's, I think there's a perception that the Steamship Authority doesn't listen to any complaints. And I can assure you, they do listen to complaints. They've had multiple meetings with various people from Woods Hole on these. And I'd like to point out a few of the changes that have been made since this initial set of complaints began in October 2015. The first is that Jake breaks. And you'll remember Kathy Norton worked hard on that problem. And it has been continued. And that also includes letters to shippers and Steamship Authority personnel. If they hear a truck coming down that uses, Jake breaks, we'll go and talk to the driver. The 5:30 ferry started in the summer of 2012. So it ran for four years before anybody brought complaints to the Steamship Authority. One of the issues that sort of prompted that was that unfortunately, in the fall of 2015, the vessel that was used was not a drive-through vessel. It was a backup vessel. And so there was backup noises. And so as I said to you the last report that I gave you, there's no longer a backup vessel assigned to the 5:30 slot. Other changes, there've been a number of additional no idling signs. And again, the terminal employees, if a truck is idling, will remind them, I mean, will tell them to turn their engine off. There've been multiple letters to freight companies explaining the Steamship Authority's concern to minimize any disturbance, to minimize the disturbance to anyone in the area. Also, the terminal is not open until 30 minutes prior to the first sailing of the day. So if the first sailing is at 5:30, the terminal's open at 5:00. If the first sailing is 6:00, the terminal's open at 5:30. And the last thing that I want to point out is I gave a report, several reports, talking about the feasibility study of freight from New Bedford. I can't give you a lot of detail on this right now, but what I can tell you is there are two studies that are being financed by the Steamship Authority. One, the trash alternative study, working with Tisberry and Oak Bluffs to try to have, to eliminate the trash trucks by having the trash go by barge. And the second is a feasibility study by Craig Johnson, who's somebody who's, who worked on the New Bedford to Martha's Vineyard route back in the early 2000s. And both of those studies are underway. And when there's more information, I'll be sure to let you know and report on it. And the third thing is there are no docks right now in New Bedford that could take a ferry. And so that question has to be resolved. And I would think that the, part of the responsibility from that will be the people from New Bedford. And I just want to end by saying the Steamship Authority welcomes comments and suggestions, takes all comments seriously, and to the extent possible incorporates changes to incorporate, incorporates changes to improve operations and provide mitigation to all the communities in which it operates. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. I really appreciate you turning your schedule upside down to come in up here before the board with not much notice to you as well. So we appreciate that. And really to give really hopes and prayers to the folks who did get hurt and, you know, good wishes in the Steamship's efforts to resolve any issues. That was certainly an unusual occurrence. I understood, I read in the Enterprise, something like for the last 25 years or something, there hadn't been such a running of ground. So I hope that works out.
Yeah, I saw, I unfortunately saw Wayne being interviewed and someone said, "Has this happened before?" And he kind of went, "No, no, this is the first time." But anybody, that's one of the things I try to stress. You look at, you go down to the docks, you get on the boat on a beautiful day, and you think, "This'd be a great job." But in fact, the people who are working out on the water, maybe one day in 10 is a really beautiful job. It's a dangerous job and they do a really, provide a really important service for the public.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
So at the hearing tomorrow, is there any chance of a schedule change?
Pardon me?
Is there any chance that the schedule could change following the hearing tomorrow?
The schedule will not change tomorrow, but certainly we will listen to all the testimony tomorrow. A report will be, you know, a summary of the testimony will be given to the authority board and will be discussed at, well, not at next week's meeting. We'll have several weeks for that report to be prepared, but it'll be discussed at the July meeting. Certainly, there's always opportunities. Every year that I've been on the board, there have been changes.
So the schedule that's been posted and noticed, it could, it still has to be voted as a final schedule in July?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. It hasn't been voted on yet.
Okay.
Doug?
Do you have any knowledge as to the reason why the 5:30 has to be a freight boat? I mean, I spoke with Mr. Lambert-Lamson and he said that it's imperative that a boat gets out of Woods Hole early because there's kids over in the vineyard that have to go to school. But I don't understand why there couldn't just be a passenger boat and then the freight do the next trip.
I think part of the reason why, especially in, well, in the summer especially, is because of traffic on the other side. It's, well, you know what the islands are like. And they, and as much as we have a summer, it gets bigger here in the summer, it's even more of an increase there. And so I think it's for the trucks to be able to get to their deliveries before the traffic gets too bad.
So could the 5:30 boat just be a summer freight boat and not, you're saying the major problem is traffic there on the summer. Could it just be a July-August 5:30 boat and not the other 10 months of the year?
Well, I can actually give you some information on that. So the original freight boat in 2012, it was May 12th to October 14th. Then it was increased to April, middle of April to October. It stayed that for 2014. In 2015, it started in April and it went to January.
Yeah, I thought that's when the complaint started.
Well, they did start, but they started in October, which is when they had been. The next year, it was the same amount of time, but it was shifted from March 16th to December 7th. This year, it was March 17th to October 27th, so it was reduced by 40 days. And the schedule is published if it doesn't go past October 27th, and we haven't gotten to that schedule yet. But if it doesn't go to October 27th, it'll be reduced by an additional 17 days. So it's, there's clearly an effort to try to minimize the time that that boat is sailing.
Any more questions from the board?
Just a comment. I feel like once a nuisance has become a problem and once a person's become, or several people have become aggravated, it's very hard to bring them back. So I just don't see any real solution other than eliminating this 5:30 boat because obviously there's a lot of people that are being impacted.
Well, there are a lot of people who would like no truck traffic on Woods Hole Road.
Is there a desire on the part of the board to submit a position letter?
I think so.
Sam?
I'm going to abstain. I think this is a larger issue.
So you'd say no letter?
That's correct.
I feel very comfortable with our board taking position, requesting that the Steamship Authority do what they can to consider eliminating this freight boat, knowing that they're going to do what they can, that they have been responsive to the concerns. I think it's appropriate for us to express the concerns. I think it's also appropriate then for it to be respectful if, well, there are other mitigating circumstances that prevent it from being changed. But I'm comfortable making the position that we really would like to not to be a freight vessel earlier than, I mean, I know the petition is saying 6:30. I think maybe 6 o'clock would be what I would be pushing, is saying that there's no freight vessel before 6:00.
So...
I think it's a reasonable request for the town of Falmouth to move forward to not have these freight trucks coming through the town that early in the morning.
So just, I'm trying to hone it into, so it'll be put in writing if that's the vote. So the option that the Steamship Authority gives serious consideration to the well-documented impacts to Woods Hole residents before adopting the proposed schedule for the winter and spring of 2018.
I think that's option in letter two you were talking about.
That's right. That would, let's call that one for now. And the next one is just a little more detailed, that it would be the board's position that a 5:30 a.m. freight departure from Woods Hole presents an unreasonable burden to our community and we ask you to give serious consideration to changing the first freight departure to 6:30 for calendar year 2018 and thereafter. Which is the one that fits your...
I'm very comfortable with making that request, but I also understand the challenges that the Steamship Authority has.
So do you want, you think it would make sense for the board to make us be specific with respect to the 5:30 being stopped?
I do. I agree. I think a 5:30 boat would be okay if it was a passenger ferry, but I just don't understand, and I've got the explanation, but just because the truck drivers want to be early and do their deliveries, I just don't think it's enough of a reason. I think that, I think we're justified to send a request.
Doug, if you want to make that a motion?
I don't make that motion.
Or that was really your motion, I suppose?
Yeah, that was. I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Abstain.
One abstain. Thank you. That will go on tomorrow. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, I know we have some folks in the audience anxious to get back to their homework, so it's the Falmouth Skip the Straw Initiative. So what's this about?
My name is Dani Kincaid, and I want to thank the board for allowing myself and my group to address you tonight. I'm going to briefly introduce the ladies you see here. They are part of a really exciting new initiative in Falmouth. They're acting under the auspices of the Falmouth Water Stewards, a local environmental organization, in collaboration with Sea Education Association. And the girls are representing the Skip the Straw campaign, a project they started. And its focus is to reduce the use of one-time or single-use plastics in the town of Falmouth by visiting, performing outreach and educating local schools, businesses, and the general public as to the harmful impacts of single-use plastics on marine environments. They are collaborating with the Sea Education Association on a larger project called SUPER, which stands for Single Use Plastics Reduction. That broader project is aimed at behavioral change and convincing people to change their habits into using less single-use or one-time-use plastics. And that campaign or that project will be, is designed to have a broader reach than just Falmouth and hopefully impact all of the regions where the SEA students come from. The driver behind all, both of these collaborative efforts is really because Falmouth, like so many other coastal environments, is really highly dependent on its clean beaches and healthy waters to ensure social and environmental and economic livelihood. And single-use plastics such as straws in Skip the Straw, coffee stirs, plastic bags, water bottles, these items all top the list of most commonly-found marine debris items by the National Ocean Conservancy on their international coastal cleanups. And they are really the most harmful to the marine environments and our beaches. And so the girls would like to address you tonight. And before I turn the floor over to them, we'd just like to really acknowledge that a lot of our support is coming from NOAA, from a Marine Debris Award that we received in collaboration with SEA, and as well as the Cape Cod Foundation and the Cape Cod Five Foundation. So all of this work that the girls have been doing has been supported by these efforts. And so they're going to say a few words to you tonight on their campaign, and I'll let them have it.
And ladies, if I could make a request, as chair, as part of your presentation, could you just end with how your teachers have helped you in this work?
Yeah. So we are the Skip the Straw Girls. We're a group of middle schoolers from Woods Hole, Massachusetts. Our goal is to educate people about the damaged plastic straws and other disposable plastics due to our oceans and our earth, and to encourage people to change their behavior and use less plastics.
We think Falmouth, a coastal town with lots of scientific institutions, for example, HU and MBL, should be a leader in making our world a better place. And an easy way to start it is by reducing our use of straws and other single-use plastics.
Every day we use more than 200 million straws in the USA alone, which is enough to wrap all the way around the earth.
Scientists estimate that the amount of plastic garbage in the ocean will double by 2025 if we keep using and throwing plastic away at our current rate.
Every piece of disposable plastic has to go somewhere, and even if it's broken into millions of tiny pieces, it will still be toxic to the environment.
Petroleum-based plastics are one of the worst things for the earth. They don't biodegrade, at least not for a very long time.
And scientists believe that at least 90% of all seabirds have plastic somewhere in their system, inside their bodies.
They're finding every kind of plastic garbage, from straws to lighters to bottle caps, in the guts of sea creatures. In one case, a bird was found with an entire glow stick and three balloons in its stomach.
Not only are seabirds affected by plastic straws, but other marine animals are too, like turtles and fish, and marine mammals, like dolphins and whales.
Consider this, do you really need a straw or disposable plastic cup or water bottle? There are lots of ways that all of us can help with this project.
One thing to do is to not use straws at all because for most people, they're completely unnecessary.
For example, when you go to a restaurant, ask your waitress or waiter not to give you a straw, and tell them why you'd like to skip the straw, because you care about the oceans and earth.
You can also cut down on your use of other plastics, like one-use water bottles, cups, and plastic bags by carrying reusable cups, containers, and water bottles. cups, and plastic bags by carrying reusable cups, containers, and water bottles with you in your backpack, on your bike, and even in your car.
Also, restaurants can help by not giving straws unless people ask for them, because usually in restaurants, they give you a straw whether you want one or not. And when people do ask for a straw, we encourage restaurants to use either reusable or biodegradable straws.
So far, we've talked to Girl Scouts, schools, and local organizations like HUI, and as well as lots of people at farmers markets and other local events, and we're working on changing people's views about single-use plastics.
We're working with schools to reduce their use of plastic straws in the cafeterias, but also to get marine debris education into the classroom, so kids know more about their daily choices, how their daily choices can affect our oceans.
We've also started talking to restaurants about changing their policies on using straws and other single-use plastics. We'll be doing a lot more of that this summer with Madeline, our SEA SUPR intern, well, not ours, but she's working with, she's very helpful.
We also work with SEA to participate in and organize coastal cleanups at beaches around town. We sort up and count the marine debris we find and submit this data to the Ocean Conservancy.
We encourage everyone in Falmouth and in other places to make a pledge to skip the straw and to reduce their use of plastics whenever and wherever they can.
We hope you'll help us keeping our ocean and earth clean for our future.
Thank you.
Excellent, ladies. Please state your names, one at a time, and how your teachers have helped you with this really impressive initiative.
So, my name is Meredith, and I've, Meredith Kincaid. I've talked to a few of my teachers about this effort to reduce plastics, but we've mostly been working outside of school.
I'm Sadie Levek. We've started working with our principal, Mr. McGlaughlin, at Morse Pond School, and he is definitely like into the idea of skip the straw. We haven't quite done anything yet, but he's definitely game for working with us.
Great.
My name is Kalea Holdren, and we've mostly worked outside of school, but we have talked to our teachers a bit.
Great.
My name is Petra Brienza. My teacher let us come into her classroom and talk about straws and to our classmates and why they shouldn't use them.
I'm Ursula Junker. I don't think Skip the Straw has really entered my school life, but a lot of adults in my community have been enthusiastic and supportive about our idea of helping raise awareness about mobile plastics and especially straw.
Great. Any comments or questions from the board?
I'll just comment. I'm actually the vice president of Falmouth Water Stewards, and I can attest that nobody's teaching them to do this. This is their initiative.
Fantastic. Sam?
Well, I just want to commend you, because I remember back in the '70s, long before you were even born, sailing in the Virgin Islands, in one of the outer islands, actually crossing over the island, coming over on a remote beach, and just seeing the spread of waste plastic. And I can only imagine how much more has been added to the oceans. You certainly read about the animals that you've cited that have ingested some of this material, and probably greatly handicapped their lives if it didn't kill them itself. So this is not something that's seen by most people, so they say out of sight, out of mind. So I really appreciate your effort to educate everybody and get people to think twice about their use of the single-use plastic items like straws.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
And I would also just comment that the Falmouth School System, I think, has brought kids to be concerned about our world and our environment, our nature, and also, these five girls are from the Children's School of Science.
So... I was wondering when that was coming.
I'll just add a couple comments. I'm Sierra Munoz. I help coordinate the girls' campaign, but really, they barely need any coordination because they're...
You're very helpful.
They're such motivated young women. It's really a pleasure to work with them. One of the initiatives we are really excited about and have been ramping up the last few months is talking to the Falmouth Public Schools and getting in at, we're talking about starting at the third grade and then hopefully the Morse Pond grade levels to get in, to do more presentations to the individual students, and have these girls help develop age-appropriate presentations that would really inform the students about how their actions affect this coastal ecosystem that we all love. And we'll be going into Morse Pond in the fall when they do their coastal cleanups. Several of the classes over there do walk down to do beach cleanups, and we'll be going and doing, hopefully, an assembly ahead of time to do some education about why they're doing that, why that's important. So, you know, you can tell that these girls are so passionate about reducing plastics in this coastal community that we all share and love. And so, you know, they're here, they wanted to spread the message, and they also wanted to kind of ask you all as representatives of Falmouth, you know, if you can support their efforts. You know, skip the straw is the specific symbol that they use, but also, you know, we'd just like to say that as a town of Falmouth, we are committed to working towards using less plastic and reducing our single-use plastics. So, you know, we wanted to ask you, as the selectmen, you know, what our options are. We'd love to have your support, say, for example, you know, on our, on the girls have a website, and they do press releases for their various cleanups and things. They'd love to be able to say that, you know, we have the support of the Board of Selectmen and the initiative. They also would want to consider submitting a resolution to the town meeting in the fall. We had talked to them about that, and we'd love to get your input and any suggestions, and we just really appreciate your time.
Terrific presentation. One of the things I think we can suggest is to coordinate with the Solid Waste Committee. We have some experts in that regard right here in town, and I certainly could take a motion from this board to really support and endorse the Skip the Straw initiative and everything that it means.
I move that we support the Skip the Straw campaign as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Great job.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I think another step we can also take is for you to come forward with a proposal or a proclamation that we could come forward, declare a Skip the Straw Week or something like that. A resolution at town meeting, I don't think really is as appropriate. I certainly know that the town moderator is trying to avoid having town meeting, use town meeting as a resolution to, really, it's much more as a legislative body to pass by laws than to have resolutions like that. But certainly to come back to us with a proclamation could be a way we could advertise it again.
That's a wonderful idea. And if Mr. Fineran in the back green is a member of Solid Waste Committee, so just so you have a contact person.
You can come talk to us anytime.
Wonderful. Thank you. Sam?
Today, as his chairman, and just email her, and we'll push on the agenda.
Great. Thank you very much.
One other thought is, you say you have a website, and it may be possible we could link your website to our website, particularly the Conservation Commission. Might be a nice way to complement and get a little bit further reach.
That would be wonderful. Who did I contact? You can contact me.
Oh, there you go.
The girls actually, I think, have a slot on an upcoming agenda to talk to the Conservation Commission as well. So, yeah. We're coming your way. And another thing that we were thinking about is that... Pardon me, just for, I have to ask you for the audience at home to hit the microphone?
Yeah, just speak to the mic.
Great.
Thank you. One of the other things the girls are working on is trying to coordinate the vast amount of beach cleanup efforts that go on in an ad hoc fashion right now. And there are private communities, there are public beaches, some of the schools do them, and in an effort to not arrive at a beach and have it, you know, already cleaned just yesterday, which almost did happen this past year, the girls are starting to track, and moms as well, the girls are starting to track the vast amounts of beach cleanup efforts. And it would be wonderful if we could at least have that accessible somewhere on the town, so people who are interested and, you know, maybe working with the Beach Commission or something along those lines to publicize a beach cleanup schedule or a beach cleanup, here's what's happening on the beaches around Falmouth.
And, you know, we have the townwide spring cleanup as well, so Leslie Lichtenstein, I think, runs that still, so that's another coordination point.
That's great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I just saw a pop-up from an email from Linda Davis that she's very interested.
Great. All right.
Thank you very much. Well done.
One last item, one last thing we might be able to work out, I don't know if it's appropriate, but if we had enough of these, when people come in for licenses, we could say, oh, and here's this, and please consider it.
Maybe coordinate that with the town manager?
Just informational.
We're in the process of updating and releasing a nice schnazzy brochure, so we'd love to...
We're getting flashy in, yeah. More professional.
Nice.
We're on our way. Thanks very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for your work.
Good job.
Next item, we have a request for waiver of fees for the Big Fix Falmouth 2017. This was previously approved, and we have our fee waiver policy. Mr. Sousa, did you have any thoughts on this request?
My thought would be, one or two of the items requested are not within the purview of the board under your fee waiver policy. I would just suggest, if the board's comfortable, that you approve a waiver of fees consistent for that event, consistent with your existing selectman's fee waiver policy.
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Could I request that you at least let us know which fees would be waived then?
Certainly.
I certainly don't remember which ones, and I assume you will communicate this to Laura Recford from the Housing Assistance Corporation.
Correct. For instance, she mentions police details. Board of Selectmen have no oversight on police details, neither does the town officially. That is a creature of the police department, working with the police union, so that is a matter that would not be within her purview. But be happy to confirm those items.
If you could just, actually just copy us on your correspondence to her, that would be nice. I know that the Rotary Club is interested in supporting this effort, so maybe that there are some other organizations within the town that could actually help in offsetting some of these expenses.
Certainly.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to interview, vote, and appoint committee members, starting with the Community Preservation Committee. There are two at-large vacancies with terms until June 30th, 2020. There were three applicants that were interviewed on June 5th. Russ Robbins, Sandy Cuny, Mary Patricia Barry. Just as a point of information, one incumbent for reappointment until June 30, 2020. Paul Glenn has expressed interest and is scheduled for an interview on the 19th. Is Paul here? Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. Paul, would you step up? Nice to see you.
Thank you, Paul Glenn. And so I'm being interviewed for an at-large position on the Community Preservation Commission. I've been on it for a year, I think it was an expired term, but I came on for a year. So this would be a three-year term. And I came before you a year ago. I wasn't here before because I didn't get notice of that. I didn't. I got the notice this, last week, that I should be here this week, so...
You're forgiven.
Okay, thank you. So I've enjoyed being on the board, on the commission. I have paid attention to the Community Preservation Commission since it's been formed. I remember following it in the Globe as the act got passed, and I've watched it play out during this whole century just about here, and it's done great things. It's done great things, and I want it to continue. I want to be part of it. I think that the town wouldn't be the same if we didn't have the Community Preservation Commission. It's not how great we are, but it's the funding that allows some of the other great organizations in town to be funded. People may not know, you can tell me if I'm going on too long, whenever they're... The Community Preservation Commission, we vote on matters that deal with open space, affordable housing, historical preservation, and recreation, too, there. And the town has done a great job, and all three of them. We, on our board, you hear us talk more now about affordable housing, not because that's more important than the other two, they're all important, but because it's fallen behind. Most of the funding has been to open space, and it's been to historical, mainly been to open space. We want to continue that. I think we're going to have a lot of funding coming up and a lot of ability to be able to continue to buy open space, but at the same time, we have to fit in some affordable housing into that there in a way that doesn't hurt any part of the town, but may actually help develop part of the town a little bit better. And I think all of that can be balanced, and we can accomplish all of that. Not all, while we're, not all in a short period of time, but I think we can do that.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I'm familiar with Paul. I remember from last year.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, to the board, as I understand this, and Doug, if you have any assistance here, there are three applicants for two positions, and then Paul Glenn is a separate...
I think we actually have four applicants for three positions.
Three positions, yes.
All right. So Mr. Glenn is considered in the same as the, okay, so...
We are charged to consider them all equal.
Equally. All right. So it's Russ Robbins, Sandy Cuny, Mary Patricia Barry, and Paul Glenn, four applicants for two at-large vacancies with terms until, two until June 30, 2020, one incumbent position with a term until June 30, 20, so three total.
Unfortunately, the document, there's no such thing as an incumbent position. We have three at-large positions.
Right.
I think she's just distinguishing Mr. Glenn.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I've been your liaison to the Community Preservation Committee for the last three years, and there's been concerns expressed to you about the amount of turnover that there's been in the committee and the, trying to maintain some continuity. There are a lot of technical details that people on this committee have to be familiar with in order to be able to represent the citizens of this community and not get us into particular situations. And I would just like to advocate for, and so I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Russell Robbins, Sandy Cuny, and Paul Glenn to terms at the at-large positions that will finish on June 30th of 2020.
Is there a second to that?
Second, the discussion I would add to that is, well, Russ Robbins and Sandy Cuny are both considered new members of this committee. They're new at-large members who've been serving on the committee in different roles, one representing the Recreation Department, one Recreation, or the Recreation Committee, and one representing the Conservation Commission.
Right.
Can I say that I really appreciate Mary Berry applying for this position, and I'm really disappointed that we don't have a fourth spot, and I would just encourage her to please keep trying, because we could really use her in future years. It's just unfortunate that we have these experienced applicants, and we need to worry about the continuity on this particular committee. So that's why I'm making this motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the applicants in your interest. Much appreciated. The next is Conservation Commission. We have one alternate vacancy until June 30, 2019, one alternate vacancy until June 30, 2020, two applicants, Kevin O'Brien and Peter Walsh, both having already been interviewed. And Mr. O'Brien having been appointed to the alternate term June 30, 2020, Peter Walsh has been appointed to the term June 30, 2019. So I think that that's just a confirmation that we're all set on that.
Correct.
The next item is on Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We have one vacancy until June 30, 2020, one applicant, Alan Robinson, who was interviewed on June 5th, voted for to be appointed, and the vote is for today. It's one applicant for one vacancy.
Again, we actually, I think, have three positions, and we have four applicants. Three of them are incumbents, and one of them is a new applicant.
That's very, much more succinct to your... We also have Christopher Poloney, Jonathan Snyder, and Mark Fineran. So three applicants for reappointment for another three-year term. And so it's actually four for three, as you said, including Alan Robinson. Would anyone like to make a motion?
There's positions for all four people.
There are.
Correct.
It's just that one's only got a term through June 19th, 2019.
Right.
Is that how you read it as well?
No.
Okay. Why'd you make the most?
The vote to appoint on 6/19...
Oh, I see. Yes, I'm sorry.
...is suggesting that that's when we would vote, not June 2019.
So these are all the same terms?
There's three terms ending June 30, 2020, and we have four applicants. There's three terms ending June 30, 2020, and we have four applicants.
That's the way I understand it as well.
And three who are incumbents.
I see. Okay.
So we have four, three positions. Alan Robinson, Christopher Pallone, Jonathan Snyder, and Mark Fineran. Would anyone like to make a motion?
And to be receivers, letters to all the incumbents if they wanted to be up.
Mark is here. Yes, we did. We've got Alan Robinson, yes. And...
Because I just didn't see...
Chris Pallone and Jonathan Snyder, I'm not 100% sure. Mr. Fineran, could I ask you to come up for any information?
In the packet, I did see Mr. Pallone's. I don't recall. We'll have to take another look.
If I just, we saw this.
Right.
Get a copy of response to that.
Mr. Fineran?
As far as mine was concerned, you have a new policy this year where you request and send a letter. I didn't send the letter in and when I saw it on the committee appointments several weeks ago, I texted Selectman Braga and told her that I was definitely, obviously, interested in maintaining my seat. And John Schneider and Chris Pallone both sent, actually sent their applications in.
Thank you.
Or at least they said they did at the meeting last month.
Very helpful. I appreciate it. So there are four in play, four applicants for three positions.
I'd actually want to make sure we actually have these documents. I mean, that's what we, our policy is, we ask these documents to be returned. And if we don't have the signatures and the documents, I'm a little concerned about really knowing whether... I wouldn't want to not appoint Mr. Robinson when he's done all the paperwork we've asked him to and we don't actually know the others we have.
Thank you. Mr. Fineran, I'll just, for our edification, the actual form we have is not filled in, although your interest has been noted on the record. Would you mind, we'll hold this, and if you would just fill that in with the...
It actually says that you can just call as well.
It says if you have any questions, call.
You can even, you can even use mine and just submit it to the town manager before you leave today. Thank you. We'll hold that one. Next, we have Recreation Committee. Mr. Zine, are you here? Ah, great. Welcome. Please come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Suso, members of the board, good evening. My name's Tom Zine, Captain Bonenburg, Elaine, East Falmouth. I'm presently applying for the position of Rec Committee. I've lived in Falmouth since 1979. Presently, I am a town constable. I'm a former town and state employee, substitute teacher. I was involved in a nonprofit organization, small business owner, and I possess my builder's license. Everyone applying for this position brings something different and unique to the table. It's a very diverse group. What I bring is the perspective of starting my 26th year of coaching on these fields in Falmouth. I've helped coach lacrosse, girls softball, youth baseball, high school baseball, youth football, junior high football, and I am currently on the high school football staff in Falmouth. I'd like to think that I've been in the trenches and not only have I coached on every field in Falmouth, but also understood some of the concerns on each field. Some concerns that need to be addressed are spacing, conditions of the fields, the new turf stadium being moved to the high school, and the senior center being moved to Main Street because frankly, our seniors deserve the best. Over the years, I have established great relationships with many parents, coaches, the Rec Department, and the community as a whole. I've listened and understood some of their concerns. I have an understanding as to which fields require little maintenance while there are challenges facing the others. I am in a great position with a current and informed point of view to help make a difference in making a difference starts by going back out to these fields, walking and looking around, talking to parents and players, and assessing the quality of the fields. I played sports growing up and I felt that a way of giving back to the community was to get involved in coaching. Now that all my children have gone through the youth sports programs in Falmouth and they had a great experience, a new way of giving back now is to take on this new position on the Rec Committee and get involved here as well. I'd like to thank you for your consideration and if you have no questions of me, I look forward to the opportunity of working with the other members on the Rec Committee and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Zine?
No, but I agree about the fields.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gelfe?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Gelfe. I live on Hill and Plain Road in Valleymead. I am a lifelong Falmouth resident. I went to school here and graduated from Falmouth High School in 1981, quite a while ago. I have a business degree from the University of New Hampshire where I also ran track and cross country. With my wife Wendy, we own and operate Gelfe's Candies in Falmouth and in Mashpee. And I'm feeling a little guilty because, yes, we use plastic straws.
But you can change.
Yes, for sure. We also own Kaling for Kids, a children's clothing store right over here on Main Street. We have two college-age kids that have grown up in Falmouth and attended Falmouth Public Schools. Over the past 20 or more years, I've also been involved in coaching, soccer, baseball, tennis, a lot of ice hockey, most recently, girls' ice hockey. Both my kids compete collegiately in golf, so I know a fair amount about that sport as well. Some of the organizations I've been involved in, Falmouth Youth Hockey, our Neighborhood Association in Valleymead, Falmouth Little League, the Chamber of Commerce here, Falmouth Village Association, Arts Falmouth, and the Falmouth Road Race. As far as the Rec Committee goes, it's always something I've been interested in and wanted to partake in. I know over the years, there seems to have always been a vacancy or two and I've been approached by that, but with family, with work, with a lot of the other volunteer gigs I've had, the time hasn't been right. And I feel that if I cannot be a productive contributor of something, I'm not going to take it on. But with now, with my kids at school, and currently I only serve on the Road Race Board, I feel like I have a little bit of extra time to contribute to this. I think I've had a positive effect on almost every organization that I've been a part of. I'm hardworking, pragmatic. I consider myself a team player and get along with most people. But I'd like to think that my strongest asset is that I bring a business sense to most things that I deal with. And I think it's paid off in organizations that I've been a part of. I appreciate you considering me and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one question. Being the longtime person in town, why are there eight people running for three positions?
I know, that is interesting.
When we've had, as you said, we've had vacancies for years. Any idea why?
I was surprised to hear that there were that many.
I love when this job is so hard. This is great.
So I don't know, maybe with the senior center and the fields being such a hot topic that it's bringing people out. But, you know, they're big items and they need to be dealt with, so hopefully I can help.
I have the same question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Carrati?
Good evening, everyone. Walter Carrati, Precinct 3. I am currently on the Recreation Committee and running for reappointment. Just to give everybody a feel for my personal background, I've participated in from my youth, when I was seven or eight years old, up through high school and college in six different sports. So I think I know what it takes to develop the skills for those different things, ending with playing for Falmouth and the Cape Cod League for two seasons and Harwich for one season. So I think I know about, a lot about youth development as it comes. I've also coached all of those sports from, for both boys and girls, from ages six up through high school. So I think I know what it takes to work with them at different age levels, which I think is important from a recreation standpoint. I've been an athletic director and a physical education instructor at a private school in Hyannis for 14 years. So I've developed programs, worked with kids on developing their confidence and their skills, which I think is very important for a position of this type. I've been on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club, for the, don't laugh at this, for the Georgia Amateur Hockey League when I was living in Georgia. Believe it or not, it was better than you would think because you got people moving in from all over the Northeast. We'd come up in tournaments up here and actually win them. So, and I am on the school committee and I'm the lead person in relocating those fields from here out to the high school campus. So I think that's an important issue for both the Recreation Committee and the school committee. And I'm also on the opioid prevention committee for the town, which I think is going to be a big issue moving forward. It already is. So I would appreciate your consideration for reappointment. I've enjoyed the time I've spent with the committee. I look forward to spending some more time and developing the things that we've been working on and working on new things. And I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it. The Dillans here? Yes. Lori, come right up.
Just one.
Just one. Got it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. So I promise this isn't my speech. So I'm Lori Dillon. I am a neighbor of Mr. Gelfe's. I've been an 11-year resident of Falmouth, Massachusetts, living on Karen Ridge Road. I am the wife of Patrick Dillon. He was the former principal of Morse Pond. I am a 24-year veteran of Citizens Bank, so I'm the executive who runs their advertising and marketing team. But the reason I'm here today is really because I have three children. So I have a 12-year-old, a nine-year-old, and an eight-year-old who are extremely active in sports, football, soccer, and lacrosse. I grew up playing sports and it's the reason why I think I've been successful in life as well as my husband. And I think the reason there are eight applicants is because if you stand around the fields and you hear what other parents and you watch your children play, there's clearly a need for improvement. The Gail Report, if you've read it, certainly states when you have 36 fields and not one was rated a three or a four, there's certainly an opportunity for change. If you asked anyone who I've worked with over time, and I do work off Cape, one of the best things they say about me is that I'm an advocate for change, to think of different ways to get things accomplished and make it happen. And I think that's probably one of the biggest reasons that I want to join this committee is to make change happen. I want change on these fields before my children are playing sports in college. Every day that goes by, those fields are getting deteriorated. It's overused and if we don't make change soon, I think it's just going to cause injuries. And quite frankly, it's an impact of pride in the town when we see our children playing on sports fields in that condition. So I thank you for your consideration and look forward to seeing some change happen.
I have a question.
Any questions?
So the conflict is overuse and canceling programs. The easiest solution, the way you solve overuse right now is you say, we are going to not have as many games. We're not going to have as many teams and not have as many practices. How do we, where's, how do we fit that balance?
Well, first of all, I think that's a scary question when, one, we have a problem on Cape Cod of keeping families here. And I think sports for a lot of us has been the big difference between us being successful in life or staying out of trouble. So I think that's a really hard question for all of us to ask is that we're going to have to start to cancel some programs around it. But if you follow what the Gail Report has, they have some great considerations for us to think about, not without investment. And I think my background in 24 years of banking would help with that, but I think there's always trade-offs with decisions. I'd hate a trade-off to be less sports for our children. I think that has long-term impacts for them.
I agree. But the suggestions are down the road. We can't, we cannot get three new fields, nine new fields this fall. So what do we do this fall? If overuse is creating the great problem, the only way to, this fall, avoid overuse is to say we're doing too much. That's the only way we can do it. And I'm worried about that because I agree with you. It is very important that we have these sports fields and we have these, and getting these kids involved in sports is crucial. I worry that we then really bump, you know, that the complaints are all overuse, 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 without being aware that we need to be careful about pushing too hard on that because the solution for that is to not use them as much by not having as many support programs.
I think just from my tour of the fields last week, it seems like some of it is a management issue where the, like the fields at the trotting park, seemed obvious to me that the goalposts should be moved occasionally because it's just a big brown area in front of the goal. And there's one field there that's been out of use for two years. It's not seeded. So there's some, there's some management things that we could do immediately that would improve.
Any questions for Ms. Dillon before she...
No, I think you made your case.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Dillon? Not here. Kayla O'Keefe? Not here. Okay. So everyone has been interviewed except Mark Dillon and Kayla O'Keefe. What would be the board's pleasure? This is a difficult appointment. We've got eight applicants for three vacancies.
And one of the vacancies is only till the 2018.
That's right. So we have to decide in a, on the term as well as the individuals?
Yeah.
Anybody have first thoughts? Doug?
Yeah, we should expand the committee.
I'm not taking audience participation at this point. This is a board appointment and I know you from the Rec Committee. I appreciate it, but I, and it's just not fair till a lot of applicants given your position. But thank you. Okay. You've convinced me. Come to the mic if you don't mind.
Phil Alfonso, Chair of the Rec Committee. So we had Bill Scribner step down. Mr. Scribner, his term ends June of next year. Walter's up for reappointment. Ms. Cuny and also Ms. Morano, term limits. So we have four opening spots, four open spots. Ms. O'Keefe works a night job at the Seacrest. She's not going to be able to make it. She spoke to Diane. Same story with Mark, who is her boyfriend, significant other.
So to clarify then, we can reappoint Mr. Carrati plus four? Is that correct?
Plus three.
Plus three, okay.
Yes.
I agree with what Mr. Alfonso's saying is that we, I guess we would have three vacancies until June 2020 and one vacancy until June 2018.
So I see it. I'm a little concerned that these folks haven't contacted the office.
Mr. Scribner sent his letter to Joe, Sandy, and I believe Mr. Suso, did he not?
I thought I saw that. Did, did he?
I don't recall seeing it.
He resigned. He did.
Needs to come to the Selectman's Office.
I think that's a vacancy. It's listed as June 30, 2018 though.
That could be.
Right.
But the fourth one mentioned, I don't recall seeing anything on it, whatever the new one is.
I apologize. I'm so glad you clarified and brought us up to date. It looks like some of the paperwork just hasn't gotten to us, in which case I think we're...
So the one-year term would come up for another agenda? Because I, it sounds to me like you guys don't have Mr. Scribner's resignation.
No, I think that one's okay. I think it's the third, the third term limit that we...
Right. It's the third term.
I know that Sandy Cuny and I know hers and...
And Patricia Morano. I think she, I think they're both up.
Term limits, yes.
Yeah.
Patricia Morano, Sandy Cuny, Walter is on his third year. And then you have Mr. Scribner, who resigned.
I think that's...
For four.
Walter, wasn't this your first year? Weren't you doing it one year this year also?
This was my first term, yeah. The one I just, I'm at the end of right now.
Of a one year or a three year?
Three.
Okay.
Three.
Finance committee left last year. Okay.
So the two options are we defer until the other resignation gets counted or we appoint three with the possibility of appointing a fourth later.
We don't have another meeting until after July 1st and so... Yeah, we don't have another meeting until after July 1st, and so I would, if we could, I think it'd be better if we could do some appointments tonight at least.
Yes. Well, I'd like to move that we appoint Walter Crotty to the term ending June 30th of 2020, because he's on the school committee and represents their interests.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Crotty?
Aye.
Aye. I'd be happy to postpone the others till we get it squared away.
According to our ballot, it does list that we have four total, and so I'm comfortable using the ballot as our piece of information. It says we have three vacancies, June 30 through 2020, and one vacancy, June 30, 2018.
Okay.
I would like to support, I'm on Mr. Gelfe for a term ending June 30, 2020.
Is, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to suggest Lori Dillon for a term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've got more emails for her than anybody.
Actually, you know, not to be sexist, but to have a woman on the board, on the recreation committee, I think is also a very valuable thing, just for the women's sports involved.
Especially since they're losing two.
Or only two.
And I believe we have one more appointment.
For a partial term.
For a partial term, I'd like to have the board consider Thomas Sine.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
For a term in June 30, 2018?
June 30, 2018.
Correct.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to you, by the way, and also to Selectman Brown and Selectman Braga. Thank you for coming and joining us on our field tour. I know schedules are absolutely crazy this time of year, so it means a lot that you guys came.
He's very informed, appreciate it.
And thanks to all the applicants on recreation. Congratulations to those appointed.
Thanks for stepping up and volunteering.
Much appreciated. We next have Waterways Committee. Let's see here. Do we have Kevin King here?
We interviewed him earlier.
He was last week.
Okay, okay, we want to, okay, the question on him is, appoint to June 30, 2019 vacancy.
So we had two vacancies for June 30, 2020, and we had two incumbents applying, and we had one vacancy, which is a two-year term.
Right.
June 30, 2019. At our last meeting, we did appoint Kevin King to 2020. I think the suggestion may have been that we reconsider and we appoint the two incumbents to June 30, 2020. We do have to interview Mr. Scherer, because this is one of the committees that we do have to interview our.
Okay, Mr. Scherer's here.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Scherer, would you mind coming up? Yeah.
Precinct six, and I've enjoyed myself very much on the Waterways Committee. I'm also on the Beach Committee, and that's one of the reasons I was asked for it, to go on the Waterways Committee, so we can, or keep, or keep them both, or doing and all in the same direction, which is, but I've been here sixty-six years. I moved from the North Shore, and I was a great sailor there as a kid, and I've enjoyed the waters here, and I love the beaches, and I think that's why I live in Falmouth. And I think there's a lot to do on the beaches and the waterways, and I think it's probably the most valuable resource we have, and I'd like to stay on the committee.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Scherer?
Nope. Because we've already done their appointments for till June 2020, would you be willing to come back in two years if you wanted to get reappointed instead of three years?
At eighty years old, of age, if I'm here, yes, I would be delighted to.
I was going to suggest the same thing.
Well, I would move that we appoint Mr. Scherer to a term ending June 30, 2019, and express our appreciation for willingness to serve again and then to come back a year earlier than normal.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. So that takes care of Waterways. Next, we have Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Van Keren.
Adam Kirman? Okay.
Ah, how do you, Mr. Van Keren?
Yes.
Thank you for your interest in Zoning Board of Appeals.
Good evening. I've been on the board for two years. I was appointed two years ago, and I spent probably four sessions. I participated in forty B things, like provided by Mass Housing, and found it very informative. I have an engineering background, and I think that's helped round out the board, and I'd like to continue, you know, enjoy it, and unfortunately I'm retired, so I have the time. It's time-consuming, but it's worth it, and hopefully we're getting it right.
Appreciate that.
And I think it's also, we have a good board and a good office staff.
Thank you for saying that. Questions? Sam?
Maybe just to actually confirm that Ed has been at the two housing institutes that were offered by Mass Housing Partnership the last two years, because I saw him there. I think that's a credit to him, that he's actually trying to get himself up to speed in the whole area of forty B regulations and the need for housing, so the fact that he's educating himself beyond, you know, just Falmouth, I think really speaks well for it.
Appreciate that. This is for a term ending June 30, 20, I guess it doesn't.
They're five-year terms.
Five-year terms, 2022, okay. That's a big commitment.
Hope I lived that long.
So reading the paper, I have not made it to the Zoning Board of Appeals meetings. What chances do you think we have of getting Liberty Green to do some of the things we're asking him to do?
I'm not sure we should ask.
Yeah, that's not appropriate. It's not.
We'll take that as rhetorical.
I move that we appoint Ed Van Keren to a term on the Zoning Board of Appeals, ending June 30, 2022.
I'll second that, given his reluctance to answer the last question.
That was a test. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, thanks for coming.
We have another reappointment in Mr. Colonel Van Keren though.
Ah, I think we can do it without him. So following incumbents have been recommended for reappointment to the following committee's positions. We'll do it by position. The first is Weyer's Certified Waste Water Treatment Facility. We have Charles Pierres for the term ending June 30, 2018. Patricia Neiman, same term. Stephen Parsons, same term. Stephen Devonis, same term. Cruiser Keller, same term. Wayne Resenda, same term.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Wayne Masters Highway Division Transfer Station, all with terms ending June 30, 2018. The first is Ernie Santos, also Carlos Rubello, and William Baldick.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And last, as was just mentioned, Veterans Council Committee Representative, appointed by the Falmouth Lodge of Elks, we have Colonel Edward Van Keren, June 30, 2018 term.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving to approval of 2017 seasonal annual license renewals for lodging house license, we have Captain Tom Lawrence House Inn at 75 Locust Street.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have individual selectmen's reports.
I have on a report that I attended the Tony Andrews Farm Charette on Sunday, and it was a very good, good experience. They gave a nice report about how there was four hundred and seventy-some respondents with the questionnaire, and then explained what the, most of the responses were indicating, that people had a strong interest in education, farming, of course, traditional farming, but also a lot of people wanted to see animals brought into the farm. And then one unusual coincidence was hardly anybody wanted to see any slaughtering of animals, they just wanted animals, but no slaughtering.
Sort of a petting zoo.
Yeah, sort of a petting zoo. It's a feel-good community, but we did a good job of breaking off into groups and figuring out what would be good objectives, and I'm sure they gathered a lot of good information. It was very interesting.
Sam?
Yeah, and let me just piggyback off of that. I did attend one of the working groups for, the group that's actually looking, they're calling themselves Farming Falmouth, and this is a group of Preservation Alliance and the Agricultural Committee, all trying to get together to figure out how to manage that parcel, should the town actually take ownership of it. And I was very much impressed with the members that are getting together to do that, and I think Falmouth will be served well by their representation. Attended the Mass Housing Partnership, I mentioned that, Ed was there the second day. I think the two take homes are, we have a huge challenge in Massachusetts, just as much, if not more, challenge in Falmouth, than trying to balance out the available housing with the salaries that are available for the jobs that we have in town. It's not just poor people that need housing now, it's literally almost from people who are making over the average median income, right down to people who are making only thirty percent of the average median income. There's a huge disparity in people's ability to afford housing, be it ownership or rental, here on Cape Cod and specifically in Massachusetts. And I mentioned the upcoming Cape Cod Summit, where we'll be hearing really the facts that kind of point that out and define it for us. A few Massachusetts towns are making some significant progress in providing adequate funding. I will mention Bedford got a special award recognition at the Housing Institute, and also the South Shore Chamber has taken a very proactive role in trying to identify opportunities to expand, or to start to address the disparity between the need for housing and the need for employees. Two organizations that have stepped up to really make a serious dent in their housing needs, so it's possible. Attended the CPC meeting, the VIPS Feast of Falmouth, the Friends of the Obscure Light, Beacon of Light Board meeting, oh, I'm sorry, that's, I, that was not the board meeting, it was the Beacon of Light Open House that occurred a week ago Saturday, in which they were displaying the decorated cutouts of lighthouses.
Lighthouses, yeah.
And enjoyed sitting in the front room there and talking with Betty Hatsakin, who actually lived in the house with her two children when her father was the light keeper there, and also lived in the Gayhead Light as a youth growing up, and listening to her stories was quite fascinating. And also Peter and Ed Nacollum, who were there as, when he was the commander of the Coast Guard, and listening to their stories about their experiences there at the lighthouses, a true treat to get that little bit of history, you know, and it's a shame, I wish I'd brought a tape recorder, because that would have been the appropriate thing to do.
Yeah.
And then last, I attended Hale Thomas's Equal Court of Honor on your behalf, and it was very enjoyable and very deserving of man. Oh, can I mention, I just put a request in for two agenda items in the future? Is that appropriate for now, or you want to wait?
Email would be great. It would have a record. Doug?
I also attended the agriculture meeting, and I thought that the town manager and assistant manager did a good job of fielding questions and concerns. There was a lot of people, it was the first view of it, and a lot of people were a little anxious about the whole process, but I thought that the questions were well answered, and I think by the end of the meeting, a lot of people had changed a lot of the opinions that they came in with, so I thought that went fairly, as well as could be expected, given the important concerns that these people have, it's their livelihood, so, and there was a quick concession made on the plan on Great Bay, which is, I guess, their most productive area, so I think there was, I think it was a good meeting.
Important, no. I attended Arts Alive, and just want to thank Roger and Judy Day for all the work that they put into that annually. It's really an important economic event and appreciation event. Doug?
Awesome.
Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last Wednesday evening, just to echo Doug Brown's comments, I was pleased to join my colleague Peter in attending the Shellfish Aquaculture Working Group, and we anticipate a follow-up, pardon me, a follow-up meeting in the coming week, I believe it's next Tuesday night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night at 5:30 in the Herman Room. So we welcome any and all those interested in joining us for that follow-up. Later on the same evening, Wednesday, Peter and I also attended the Conservation Commission meeting, at which there was a discussion about the selectmen's request that the Conservation Commission assume the care and custody of the Andrews Farm property at such times the town would acquire it, and was happy to comment on behalf of the board there, and the request was well received by the Conservation Commission. And I want to thank the board once again for your excellent dialogue and engagement in our annual retreat to update the selectmen's five-year strategic plan document. It was enlightening and informative, and the entire process, as I believe the board agrees, is well done and an item we look forward to annually. We anticipate bringing you the updated draft document for your further review and adoption within the coming month or so. I was pleased to attend, along with Selectman Patterson, the two-day Massachusetts Housing Institute training, to which he referred earlier, in Devens, June 7th and 8th, and that was very informative. And as the board is aware, we were pleased to be notified by the Commonwealth that the town of Falmouth has been awarded a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, the MVP Grant Program, which the board authorized just recently. Thank you. That was in the amount of $20,000 to complete a community resiliency planning process, a great news and very well timed, as we continue to move forward diligently in that important direction. And as has been noted, the board will not meet again formally. Your next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 10th, and in the meantime, obviously, the town's annual Fourth of July celebration, for which we thank the committee for their excellent work and a wonderful community gathering. Obviously, Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices will be closed on July the 4th in observance of that holiday. That concludes my report.
Just a couple of things, I want to thank the Planning Board. They've been able to schedule to meet with the Board of Selectmen on a joint meeting coming up. Mr. Suso?
Monday, July 24th.
July 24, and.
Can I question about that?
Sure.
Julian, are you off that day? I thought you had said you wouldn't be available when we were looking at selectmen meeting dates.
I believe that was Peter. Peter had given some, some dates when he might not be available. But the board had looked at three dates in July, with either the 24th or the 31st as optional potential joint meeting dates, and my understanding is the Planning Board responded with the 24th being more appropriate for them.
Okay, great.
So that's from, the direction from which we come.
And then last thing, the One Cape Meeting coming up Thursday and Friday. I'll be attending both, the first day focusing on water, and the second day focusing on housing jobs, just as you mentioned it and anyone else.
I'll be there.
You'll be there, great, Doug, and I think Sam is going to come up as well.
Madam Chair, just, pardon my interruption, but I just wanted to confirm that Diane is posting an agenda for this board in anticipation of the Thursday evening gathering, which is a dinner gathering of all members of the Board of Selectmen from throughout the Cape. And I know, Madam Chair, with you just finishing a term as chairman of that group, that you'll have a, continue to have a prominent role in that. I'll also be in attendance, of course, and we look forward to that forum, because he represents a lot of what Falmouth is frankly heavily involved in, and taking a leader, a leadership position in the Cape, so it's always a welcome gathering.
We've really had tremendous participation, particularly in the housing end recently, previously, of course, in the water, so you're absolutely right, Falmouth has really spearheaded a lot of initiatives in that regard. Thank you.
Just one more thanks to Leslie Fields for help pushing us with the coastal resiliency. She's given us great insight as to, you know, what's possible, so I appreciate that help.
Yeah, it was tough to keep track of everything, so it's nice to have many people's eyes looking out for opportunities like this.
Always hears help.
Yep.
Great initiative.
Really appreciate Leslie surfacing that.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Holiday in Falmouth opened year-round for your business and travel needs. We provide a full restaurant and accommodations for banquets, holiday parties, weddings, corporate events, seminars, and more. Featuring Casey Bar and Grill, where guests or Falmouth residents can enjoy our selection of local craft beers, cocktails, and a variety of pub food from our menu. Holiday in Falmouth, your home away from home.